And I need to find myself on the agenda. Um, all right, we're reconvening to open session and I'm hoping that Mr. Sweet would lead us in the fly slip.
All right, again, I'd like to lead this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity and justice of the world.
Uh, there is on item C three, report out from closed session. There's nothing to report from closed session. Um, item C four, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, I received a note that we would not have a student advisors' report this evening, so we will skip C five. And, um, we're on to item C six, summer migrant education student trip to Washington.
Good evening Superintendent Cuban and members of the board. Uh, I would like to present to you Alexis Santiago and Jose Lopez. They were a part of a summer, um, US history program that went to Washington DC through the migrant education program. Fifty students from Northern California had the opportunity to attend this and, um, two were from our very own hometown. So I will let them talk a little bit about, um, one of the monuments that they saw there.
Hello, my name is Alexis Santiago and I wanted to give a thank you to the migrant education program for giving me the opportunity to go and visit Washington DC. And now I want to share one thing I learned. So my... Uh, so my PowerPoint is based on the Vietnam memorial. The Vietnam memorial is where they honor the people who served the battle between North Vietnam and South Vietnam. Uh, the United's, why were, why did the war happen? The United States was fighting a communism with Vietnam. And one part of Vietnam did not agree to having a communism, so they fought. And the United States was helping Vietnam. Uh, the, the battle happened in Vietnam, South Vietnam, Cambodia, North Vietnam, Laos, Southeast Asia, and then Mox tunnels. The world, it happened in a lot of places in Vietnam or near. The war started in November first nineteen fifty-five and ended in April nineteen seventy-five. It was one of the longest wars in history. The battle took like eleven years. Uh, where is, uh, Vietnam memorial located at? It's located in Washington DC on the National Mall, a short distance south of the wall north to reflecting a pool. Uh, what I learned was people who served the world were honored for risking their life and attending the war. I was interested in this monument because I like learning about wars and I think it's important. I was impacted to see who died in the war. It's an interesting memorial because you can see it from far and it reflects and it appears to be more statues than there really is. Uh, two, also two million civilians died attending this war. Uh, John F. Kennedy, Lyndon B. Johnson and Richard Nixon were the two presidents during the war. And, uh, peace treaty was signed January twenty-seven nineteen seventy-three. And these are some photos that I took while I was in my trip.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Um, I'm envious of the trip. Washington DC is one of my favorite places. That was great. Thank you. Um, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? Thank you. Um, item C eight, acceptance of donations. And those are, um, uh, for the Pumalita School Garden, Hydro Pacific, donated for educational purposes, uh, to the auto program for possible electric vehicle conversion by Robert Earl. Uh, donated for educational purpose to the auto program, no Wayne Swank. Thank you all for your donations.
I move acceptance with gratitude.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, it looks like for item C nine, we have our UTA rep to report out to us.
Sounds like it's on. Good morning, good evening, board. My phone's ringing at the same time that I'm trying to talk. Okay. Good evening and good evening Superintendent Cuban. Uh, UTA had our first rep council meeting, actually our second rep council meeting, um, last week. My internal calendar has been a little bit off. Um, I missed a meeting with our superintendent twice now. Um, and I missed a class. Anyway, this week's much better and we would like to thank you very much for, um, the negotiations that we had the other day and the floor for the fifty-four percent, um, that we are going to have a nice raise, so we really appreciate that. And I also brought something, in fact, I think I'm going to give this to Jim Stewart because the co-op just got these in. These are aluminum water bottles. I'm really still very much aghast that we have plastic water bottles. Um, when in this day and age, we can have our own water bottles and now we can get these aluminum water bottles. And they come in smaller sizes too. So anyway, I thought I would give this to Jim Stewart and I'm hoping that the district can really, um, continue to focus on ways that we can reduce our carbon footprint. Um, it's really important to the next generation and that's why we're here. It might not be as important to our generation because we've really messed it up. So we have a lot of atoning to do and a lot of thoughtfulness that we need to put into our actions every day. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you. I have to admit from the first time you browbeat me, I've been pretty good about bringing my darn glass. Thank you for the encouragement. Um, item D one, UUSD school facilities, challenges and opportunities. Penny?
No, it's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna just wait.
Leadership team?
Oh, yeah, we have leadership team. I thought you skipped.
Man. I thought it was over the skipping stuff the last meeting. Apparently it's continued on. All right. Sorry for that.
Please, Mr. Sweet, I've never met you before, so.
Jose, nice to meet you too. So, thank you. Um, I appreciate, also have some staff members here with me so they can support me in case there's any questions you have that I honestly can't answer. Um, we have a really amazing team. Um, we've really kind of started to meld in a way this year that, um, has been amazing. Um, so I'll talk a little bit about that. Just want to mention, um, about a month ago, Lord less, I made it an executive decree that we're not doing any more water bottles, plastic water bottles in our site. So, um, we, it's going into effect probably this week, so we're going to see how that rolls out, but, um, but we're, we're doing our best to do, to work on that. You just reminded me. Um, so, uh, first of all, I just want to thank all of you and I mean this from the bottom of my heart. Everyone that's sitting up here, you have been so supportive of this crazy, and I keep, I always say this, but our crazy little experiment. Um, you've been extremely supportive, everyone from the district office to every board member sitting up here, um, other than Mr. Diaz. I'm sorry, you don't know much what we're doing, so I'm going to explain a little bit of that. Um, but I really, we thank you. Um, we've been able to do some amazing, amazing things and the support between not just the financial part of it, of the materials and supplies and professional development money, but you also have this wealth of, of information and wisdom of the community connections that we use all the time. And we use those, those little bits and you may not even know it, but you may know somebody that knows what we're doing and we kind of, we start talking. That's what's making our, our program run and thrive, so thank you. I really, really mean that. Um, so, uh, for those of you who went to our graduation last year and for those of you who went back to school, you're starting to see some of what's happening and hearing, um, the response from our, our graduates and our students and I think you're hearing some positive things. So let me talk about a couple of those things to go. Um, before I get to that, let me talk a little bit about leadership. So, um, leadership in general, as you know, is a part of a, I think called the CAPS Network. It's a, it was a grant-funded program out of UC Davis. Um, the Stewart Foundation is the financer behind that. And I only bring that up because they also happen to finance all the big picture stuff that we're doing as well. Um, and I just started putting pieces together and figured that out. So I'm in, um, I with Dara Brown are in year three of the CAPS Network. We're in the first cohort that started in Davis. Deb was one of the, uh, what was your, what was your role there called?
Facilitator.
The facilitator. Um, and then, and then so now we started up last year with all the administrators here in town with, uh, Fort Bragg and a few other places. And so now I'm in year three, whereas everyone else in the district other than Dara from Frank Zeke are in year two. And we're seeing some, from my perspective, we're seeing some huge movement and gains. And specifically, I want to call out Frank Zeke. You've seen their test scores. And it's directly related to what they've been able to do with really driving the PLC process. And I, what I mean by that is that PLC process, there is a clear formula to it. How you, what kind of things you do, you do in your PLCs, that's up to the decisions of the department, the grade level, whatever. But that process of those four questions that the first pulled out, we have been trained extensively in that. And we're implementing it on a very deep level at South Valley as well. So I think there's a silver lining. Um, all this time that you're spending pulling out subs for teachers to come to, it takes a little bit of time, but it will click with everybody and it has been phenomenal. I was very hesitant. I usually the person that stands off the side and kind of goes, is this for real? And it is. It's really, really well done. So, um, so anyhow, that's, I just want to point out, that's what we're really focusing on. I know that some of the elementary schools are doing learning rounds where they're going to each other's PLCs to see how they're doing it. And it's been effective, um, quite effective and we've been hearing some positive things from the teachers themselves. Um, so, to my school, um, our culture, we do, you know, we're supposed to be doing a culture and academics kind of like slide. You probably, you know, you know it from other schools. Our school, they're combined. I know you know this, but it's, it's kind of hard to break apart the culture and academics because they're directly linked. Uh, we use Common Core to drive all of our curriculum and that includes social emotional learning to the content base, everything. And this is truly an MTSS model that you would, you've been probably hearing a lot about. We've been doing it for a little while, not knowing that it was called MTSS. So the PBIS combined with Common Core, you get the, the two coming together. So some of the ones I'm going to point out here, um, as you probably know, we've been working heavily with trauma and resiliency through the ACEs program. I was sent last year to the ACEs seminar. I'm working with local behavioral health at a, um, with a lot of different people to figure out how to actually bring it into the school. Uh, we're really worried about rolling out ACEs without having the resiliency part behind it. So, but we've been doing a lot of work with that, uh, with our staff as well. Um, we are all about one student at a time. You heard my speech. We totally believe it. Um, the relationships that we have are, are my advisors, we call them advisors, teachers with our kids. And then what they have with those relationships with the community members and their parents, we're all about that. Um, which leads to the future because we feel that if you can have the relationships, you'll have a better individual and family and community, um, you know, core that you can build off of once our kids who have a lot of trauma are experiencing or have experienced. We focus on safety. A lot of what we do at our school is making sure that we have a safe spot. I know that's usually easier said than done, but it's all about that. So we, not only we want a safe air, culture in our school, but we want it in the community. Um, because we want to be able to walk down the streets and know that our kids have, you know, a, a living wage, right? And they feel like they're, they're, it's important for them and so we've been working a lot on, on that. Um, we're trying to re-engage our kids with lifetime learning. So a lot of the stuff that we do at our school around the culture is trying to get them back engaged and wanting to learn more and more and more. And if you heard some of the speeches at our, at our graduation, you knew that was the case. So that's, it's getting better even all the time. We have to do this thing with culture. We do SMO and PMU. This is a send me off and pick me up. So at the beginning of each week, we do a pick me up where we get the whole school together. We do an activity together to build trust. And then at the end of the week, on Fridays, or if it's Thursday, we send them all off doing something together so that they're going home happy and excited rather than fearing what they're about to experience on the weekends potentially. Um, family engagement, we've had a lot of family engagement, probably, and I've said this multiple times, but in the past, um, just last year alone, we had more family engagement than I think all the years I've combined at South Valley. And that is run through the exhibitions. We require that the parent or guardian show up to these exhibitions where the kids show off all the work they've done over the, over the semester or the year. And that is getting people super engaged, the parents going, oh my gosh, my kid can do something when I didn't think they were willing to anymore. Um, so that's been great. And then the community partnerships, I can't, I, the list is so long and it's going to get longer and longer and longer. I am so busy, um, just meeting with people in the community that, um, it's just, my head's spinning. So, and then, um, also we're really involved with community service. Every week, about two or three times a week? We do, every, every class goes out into the community, whether it's on campus or out in the local community and just does community service, picking up trash, talking with people, whatever it may be. We're really dedicated to that. So academics, um, again, you know, it's all about interest-based learning. We've really focused on that. In fact, we're completely dedicated to that process. We do a lot with mentorships, meaning that the kids are out doing internships. I can give you some numbers in a moment about how many kids are in internships or mentorships. But I want to just point out that mentorships is what this is all about. You hear the word internships a lot, but sometimes a kid just needs to connect with somebody who has some sort of skill that they have a connection with, right? So that we will find somebody in the community that has that interest as well or has those skills and have them work with that kid. It may not be an internship, but it's that partnership that we're looking for. All about rigor and relevance. We have been working a lot around Common Core, a lot. Everything we do, it's about close reading, it's about getting into the text, it's about, I mean, we're doing full-blown PLCs with, with Common Form assessments, driven around the stuff that the kids are interested in. Um, so, and, and with Angela Lemonager and who's been kind of spearheading a lot of that, um, we've been doing some great work with the PLCs on that level. Every kid has a learning plan. You could ask any kid, just about any kid right now, what they're doing. And they can bring out the sheet that has their mission, their vision, all the goals, the things they want to do, how they're going to accomplish them. It basically turns into a portfolio and that is what drives most of their learning. Um, we are also a completely competence-based, uh, school, meaning that we want them to master whatever the skill is. Common Core is a list of skills. It's not content, right, in the Common Core side of things. Not, I'm not talking about Ed Code, but. And everything on there is about mastering those things before they move on and having to show it, both practically and theoretically. Um, and then just as you know, maybe, maybe you don't know, Big Picture has been kind of anointed, um, it's in Ed Code, that this is an alternative way of doing schools. Um, so, and it's actually in there. So I just want to put, put that out there because it's, it's legitimate. Um, and, uh, and it's even getting more and more, um, traction as we move forward.
This means you can't call it crazy anymore?
Can't. Um, so, and we have been working a lot on staff specialization. I don't know if I've used those terms with the staff specifically, but we have. Everyone is, is dedicated to a different part of running the school from, you know, an academic or cultural side of things. Um, and so we're really working around those things and I can give details if anybody asks. But we're really trying to make sure that each teacher has a real focus and feels like they own something in the process of running a school like this. Um, and then, uh, leaving to learns, one of the things that we do every week, twice a week at least, is that we get kids out into the community a lot. They're like mini field trips, constantly getting out into just seeing businesses or institutions or going to just different places that maybe they've never been to. Um, and this is a one way that they get out there to experience things that they otherwise haven't. For example, real quickly, even years ago before Big Picture, I took a kid who grew up in this town to shots. He had never been in that place ever and would just, was like, he froze. And, uh, and you just start to remember, realize how, how, some of the, so many things that we experience on a daily basis, most of our kid, my kids in particular, don't. Um, so that's, that, that's that. So some of the data, I just wanted to throw out there. Um, this is last year's data. We had twelve suspensions total, um, and we had zero expulsions. Three years ago, we had thirty-three and that was even low, um, from three years ago. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Right now, I think we're at three suspensions right now, um, two kids. Um, internships, uh, last year, all combined, we had, uh, twenty-five. We're already at twenty-four. Um, we're not even, I mean, the quarter ends?
Friday.
Friday, right. So that number should shoot up to about forty within about a week or two. Um, and then we'll just continue going from there. And then last year, we had eighty-two graduates, graduates, which we thought was going to be in the sixties and it ended up being eighty-two, which was quite impressive. Um, we also, that's numbers, a high number, even though we've had a few more than that in the past. We don't get to count the adult school graduates anymore. We used to, it used to be kind of a trick, um, a couple of years ago, but now we, they figured that out. We can't do that anymore. So that's eighty-two from us at the time they were supposed to graduate. And that's it. So, questions?
Yes, Cam?
Um, refresh my memory, isn't there something about now we're allowing kids to go for five years if they need to?
Um, the answer is, yes, we could. I don't want to do that. We have a cohort now. Um, the rules changed for an all ed, um, and so we have a cohort. So if a kid comes over and I think it's sit there with it for sixty consecutive days, then they become part of this one-year grad cohort. If they don't graduate within that one year by the end of the time they're seniors, then they actually don't, it's kind of complicated, but they don't count towards that eighty-two. So I don't really want that to happen. And by then, usually I can just move them to the adult school where they can finish up and do it in a way that's real streamlined and it works around their work schedule and all that stuff. So we don't have very many fifth-year seniors. Uh, we got, we were able to, with, with the help of Deb, we were able to get rid of a lot of the fifth-year seniors, um, having that situation a couple of years ago.
So last June, when you graduated eighty-two, did you have to take any over to the adult school?
So we have a program at the adult school. It's not out, it's, it's still our school that gives them up until August fifteenth to finish up. And there were about, you know, I, yeah. Yeah, so I think we added those ten. I think about seven of them ended up graduating like late, but they were still a part of that number because we have until August fifteenth to do that. If they move past that, then, then we move them to the adult school, in most cases, unless they're just about ready to finish.
So in theory, those other three who didn't quite finish in time would be at the adult school and might be finishing in December?
And that's exactly what's happening, yeah.
Okay. Do you have the resources you need for kids who you realize once they're with you need either remedial math or remedial reading?
Yeah, that's a hundred percent of our kids, um, just about. I, we've done, we've done assessments, like formative assessments to see where, what, especially at the math level, what they, where they are when they come to us, so we can work from there. It's, just without going into too many details, they're very low. I'm thinking, I'm saying like fourth, fifth grade for a, a large number of them. I wouldn't say the majority, but a large number. Um, so, yeah. And as for the resources, well, um, we know what to do with kids who are at that level. That's, you know, that's, we, every teacher on my site can help with that at that point. Um, when you start getting higher, if a kid, most kids who come to us, they, they normally would have finished their algebra requirement before they get to us as a sophomore. So, um, we're either dealing with kids who just couldn't even come close or they're done, kind of a thing. So it's a, it's kind of a on or off, great, no, no, not much of a gray area there.
Thank you.
Megan?
Um, when, when do they do the exhibitions? Is that at the end of the year?
Yeah, so it's twice a year. We did it four times last year and we were trying to, you know, get the bugs out before we started inviting all of you because we really want you to come this year.
Yeah, I was going to ask to be invited.
So it'll be at the semesters. One, um, in the semester will be, we decided the first, the two weeks before, before break, yeah. And then the last two weeks of school, um, we will definitely be sending out invitations.
Yeah, I can't promise I'll be able to come, but I'd like to be invited.
It's a crying show. Just be ready to cry. It's a lot of that happening, just so you know. Yes, absolutely.
Bee?
I just want to say that it's really exciting to see what you guys are doing and what you've done and thank you and your staff. It's, it's very special.
Uh, thank you. And it is so much my staff. I mean, my harebrained ideas, they go one place, but it's another thing to take it and do it well and do it right. And my staff, they are professionals at the highest levels. It's been amazing to see what they've taken and done in a way that is, I mean, this thing could hit any litmus test at this point from any organization about whether or not we're doing this right or, I mean, it's amazing, so.
You have to have a start.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I had one more question. Um, are you able to follow the kids at all? And I'm thinking basically building up a huge data bank for grant writing more than anything else. Because if we can show the lack of incarceration and the amount of employment, I bet there could be all kinds of fun investors out there who would want to look at that.
We have talked about this so much, um, from a lot of the grad work I've done, this is one thing that every school would love to do. It's super expensive because of the resources. Does it mean that we can't do at least something? Um, we're, we're, we've been working on that and we haven't come up with anything, um, concrete, but we definitely really want to do that. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I am, uh, I would like to ask about the internships. Could you give me an example of?
Internships?
Sure. Um, huh, which one should I choose? Well, um, we have, um, there's one that's kind of interesting. We have a, uh, there's a company that's located at the airport. I should have you, can you can talk about this real quick? So one of the, one of the hard things about doing this program is this internship and just, you know, navigating and making sure we're doing this all right by following the kids. And Erica, who is my dean, um, has been doing a lot of the work on this.
So were you going to talk about that one?
Whatever you want to do, yeah.
Oh, this was, yes, yes. Yeah, so we, well, we've had a wide variety, but the one that he was about to talk about is called Aero Composites LLC. Um, and it's, it seems like a fairly new company, but there, there's a student who was interested in automotive. And then, um, one of our staff members had this connection, um, with this company who, they build, I know I'm not saying this right, but they build parts to airplanes. And I don't know the exact materials, but it's this really lightweight material, so they're building all of these parts for airplanes. Um, and it's very similar to auto as, as if they were, if they were building auto parts, it would be a very similar process. Um, so he took on this internship and he just loves it because it's so similar to auto. And like, we were saying, well, maybe he'll go into airspace now or do change some career paths. But, um, but it was really cool because they, they have some kind of, um, contract with Google. And so they're, they're building, um, these podiums that are, that can connect to any type of technology. And so that's what our student is working on right now. And I got to do a visit there and got a tour and went on the airway, the runway and all that. It was, it was really fun and the student was having a really good time with it. But we, that's just an example of one. Um, but we have students working with youth project. We've had a student in a preschool. Um, we have, I have a list here, so let me just glance at it to give you a few ideas. Um, stained glass, Mendocino College Horticulture Department, we've had quite a few go through there and they love it. There's a great mentor there. Um, a few different automotive places, Alvarez Car Creations, um, that's the place on State Street that has all the lowriders and that one's been really cool. That's, that's a first this year. Um, W Real Estate, Tony's Barber Shop, um, West Business Development Center, we've had a lot of mentorships there, uh, Lillian's Medical Spa, Animal Shelter. Canova Records has had quite a few of our students last year, one this year. Um, so there's just a wide variety and it's all student-led, so what, they identify their interests and then they go out into the community and figure out what might align with what they want to do. So, it's pretty cool.
That seems very valuable to students and the community as a whole. That seems very valuable to students and the community as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. South Valley is, love hearing what you guys are doing for those kids, so thank you for all your hard work. It's awesome.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go back in time. Penny, I think it's your time to shine for item D1, UUSD School Facilities, Challenges and Opportunities.
Were we not moving G? No, we changed.
We'll just do it.
At the end? Okay.
Good evening. Um, I'll just jump right into this. I'm really excited to present an update on our school facilities, the challenges and opportunities. But Chris is a hard act to follow, for sure.
And Penny, before, before you jump in there, just as a reminder to the board, I think about two years ago, we did a facilities master plan, and we worked with a variety of stakeholders to get input into our facilities master plan. You probably remember the document. It's very long paper. Um, and so this is really a summary of our facilities needs, so it should just really be a reminder of what our many, many facilities needs are.
Okay, so, um, committed to continued excellence. Um, this is just some demographics about our district in general. Of course, you're all aware, but since this is for our public as well, we have about 6,000 students, we have six ele- elementary schools, two middles, a comprehensive high school, our alternative, um, high school that we just heard about with the Big Picture program. Um, we have our independent study program, and preschools, and our adult ed program. We serve students from Ukiah and the communities of Redwood Valley, Calpella, and Hoplin. And I just love that picture. So some of the challenges we face with our facilities are that most of, of our schools are very old, built many years ago, and they need upgrades to support our 21st century learning. The aging classrooms and other instructional facilities need repairs, and then there's school safety improvements that are needed as well, including things as, like fencing, um, necessary to support the continued quality education and safety for our students. So as Superintendent Kubin mentioned, we conducted our facility master plan process in 2017. Um, we used JK Architecture and Engineering Firm, um, to guide us in that process, and then we garnered, um, many stakeholders from the community, both within our school district and, and without, and we identified and prioritized the school repair needs, and then determined costs for those as well. We had parents, students, teachers, other staff members, community members, all involved in this collaborative process. I like this picture there. We have the back of Steve Turner from Mendocino County Office of Ed. We have Brian Barrett, our, um, Pomalita principal. I see Gordon there. I believe it's two students on the right, and I believe the gal in the right is one of our science teachers from the high school. I can't recall her name. So over 40 participants, um, provided input. I believe too, our city manager, Mr. Sanjakamo, was, was part of our process. We were grateful for his input. Um, this is just a couple of pictures, typical school site needs. Um, we have very aged, is that the correct term? Uh, HVAC units on many of our elementary schools and elsewhere, and then that's a, a dated-looking classroom that could certainly use upgrading. And now we'll get into individual schools. Um, and these are the kind of facility demographics. Uh, Calpella Elementary School was built in 1954, and then there were additions in 75. It was renovated back in 2007, many, many years ago. Um, we had portables installed in the 80s, 90s, and in 2012, and there are approximately 500 TK to 4th graders there now. Um, through the needs assessment, and our Director of Maintenance/Operation Transportation, Mr. Sherman, went through and, um, and made sure these were all, um, current as far as needs assessments. Um, and you, I'll, I'll run through this, and then probably not state all of the others because they're all very similar, but it's, as I mentioned, those HVAC replacements, a lot of those, um, units are going on 30 years, um, old. The Americas with Disability Act is accessibility, um, throughout campus. Some have drainage issues, um, and then many of our portables are beyond their lifespan. Um, security upgrades throughout the campus would be, um, a great benefit, and other improvements. Now, the estimated cost assessment for Calpella Elementary's, um, uh, code and maintenance and, uh, and vision are almost $26 million. So Frank Zeke, built in 51, I think it may be the oldest.
Isn't Calpella a TK?
Yes, and, and that should say, oh, whoops, I went the other way. Oh wait, now I'm, what did I do?
You're going forward right now.
Okay, sorry.
You gotta go back. You hit the back button.
What happened? Oh, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. I thought I was using the different button. It was the same button, okay. Bear with me here. Um, yes, and it should say TK. That's a, that's a mistake right there. Um, so that we did that. So Frank Zeke, renovations in 98, the portables installed as you see there, and right now they have about 490 TK through 6th grade students. Um, their needs assessment, um, many of the same. They have the failing water pipes as well. Uh, new flooring needed throughout the campus. Um, some of the portables, besides being beyond their lifespan, have dry rot issues. Um, the fields need repairs and replacement. Also, security upgrades needed, additional improvements. Estimated cost assessment, 21.2 million. Grace Hudson, um, our newest school, built in 2004, had some portables installed nine years ago, and they serve about 450 TK 5th grade students right now. Their needs assessment, um, some ADA accessibility, other classroom upgrades needed, their fields need repairs, also security, other improvements. Est- estimated cost assessment, 11 and a half million dollars. Nakomas Elementary, built in 1954, renovated in 2000, portables installed, um, ni- in 99, 2005 and 6, right now serving 420 TK 5th grade students. Again, many of the same, um, uh, needs assessments, uh, leaking roofs added, again, the, the new flooring, fields again, security, other classroom improvements needed. Estimated cost assessment, almost $27 million. Oak Manor, built in 1957, renovated in 2002. So you're seeing this pattern here of very old schools that have been renovated very long ago, and portables that are extremely old. Um, they serve approximately 480 TK 6th grade students. Um, it looks like, uh, roof replacements is something new with this needs assessment list. Um, many, again, of the very same needs. Estimated cost assessment, 21.1 million. Yokayo, okay, this is probably the oldest, 1948, renovated three times since, in 76, 94, and 2008. Um, portables installed in the 60s and then in 96, and they currently have 485 TK to 6th grade. So many of the same needs assessment, the HVACs, the roof, flooring, ADA accessibility, drainage issues there. Um, the, I know their portables are beyond lifespan, security upgrades, classroom upgrades. Needs or estimated cost assessment, 26 million. Eagle Peak Middle School, um, are, was it after? No, this was before, um, Grace Hudson, 1997. Beautiful campus, serves approximately 550 5th through 8th grade students, and they also are in need of the HVAC, again, ADA accessibility, classroom upgrades, the fields and blacktop need repair and replacement, and you can see in the photo there, the cracks in the blacktop. Um, security upgrades, other improvements. Estimated cost assessment, almost 13 million. Bless you. Pomalita Middle School, originally built in the 50s.
Can I ask a quick question about Eagle Peak?
Uh-huh. Whoops, wrong button again. There we go.
Is it okay to ask that? Yeah, okay. Um, uh, the ADA was passed before 1997. I remember when it was. Wasn't it 91 or something? 94? So why would we have ADA problems at Eagle Peak?
It could be that there's, um, updates to the, the regulations.
So, DSA, um, and...
Department of State Architecture.
Sorry, Department, yeah. Division of State Architect, and loves to continue, I mean, they, hopefully they're not watching right now, but they like to justify their own, uh, uh, existence, so codes are continually upgrading, um, and changing, and ADA is one of them. So there's, there's new, um, new needs that are identified, and new lawsuits, and so there's, so that's continuing. The other thing is that, over time, um, even a site wears, even the concrete and asphalt wears. So one of the, one of the, the key metrics for ADA accessibility is basically path of travel. So how do you get from point A to point B in a wheelchair, on crutches, et cetera? And as our, as concrete cracks, um, you know, trees lift up, paving, there, there are issues that, that, um, come in. So, so bathrooms and path of travel tend to be the two big ones, um, at most of our sites at this point. Uh, while I'm here, can I throw in a couple of quick caveats? Um, on these lists, the needs assessments are correct, so those, those items are drawn directly from the facilities master plan. We did pull out several of the, of the narrative items that we have been able to tackle in the last several years, or that we have identified as funny. So for instance, Grace Hudson didn't have HVAC on that needs assessment. However, the, on the estimated cost, that's true to the 2017 facilities master plan, so if we have upgraded a project or done a project, that number wasn't pulled out, so that's kind of a good thing, in that it makes the, the balance looks a little bit better. But I would note that those numbers are true to the 2017 facilities master plan, so there's no escalation for time in there. So that's a snap, those, those numbers are a snapshot of 2017.
I do know those, the codes are constantly changing. Um, Pomalita, built in the 50s, um, the library, admin building and library were added in 1976, renovations in 76, 96, and 2006, and they have approximately 780 6th through 8th grade students right now. Um, HVAC replacements, and they definitely need HVAC in their gym. ADA accessibility concerns, um, classroom upgrades, cafeteria upgrades and modernization needed, security upgrades, other improvements, and that estimated cost assessment is a little over 37 million. Big numbers. Ukiah High, built in 76, renovated in 2007 and 2015, but as you know, we just finalized that fourth phase not too terribly long ago, um, and the portables were installed in all the years listed there. Um, we currently have about 6, 1,640 9th through 12th grade students at our beautiful Ukiah High.
Penny, what is, what is that?
Pardon?
What is that picture of?
Whoops.
Which one?
The orange boxes?
I don't know that picture.
Oh, is this your favorite thing?
The pool house.
What are they?
It's one of the most disgusting placeses in placeses.
Just, you know, editorial, what, like, literally is it?
It's the pool house at the Ukiah High School.
But what are they?
They were, they were lockers.
What's the weird cement trough on the floor?
That is the ladies locker room, the benches on, you can just see the bench on the right, the bench on the left. So they were used for trash, they have since been removed, which is great. They're...
They're vintage.
There's some room for improvement.
Definitely needing upgrade, replaced, modernized. Estimated cost assessment for the high school upgrades, a little over 32 million. So that brings us to the Ukiah Adult School, uh, which is comprised of all portable buildings that are over 20 years old. Um, they are in decent shape, and you know, the Ukiah Adult School's located adjacent to our Frank Zeke Elementary, and they have approximately 400 students in and out throughout the year. Um, needs assessment, HVAC, water energy efficiency updates, ADA accessibility, other classroom upgrades, additional improvements. Estimated cost assessment for Ukiah Adult School, 2 and 1/2 million. And then our Ukiah Independent Study Academy, UESA, built in 76, renovated in 2006, located , uh, at the Ukiah High Campus, and they have approximately 120 students now. Their assessments are much similar, restroom and water additions needed, technology upgrades needed, other classroom and security upgrades, other improvements, estimated cost assessment, 1.3 quarter million. And then South Valley, originally built in 76, renovated in 17, portables installed in 2004. Um, we have some more information on South Valley, you know, later in the agenda, but they serve approximately 150 students, 9th through 12th. Um, some of their needs are the HVAC, um, ADA again, you know, many of the same things, upgrades to their plumbing fixtures, new flooring, classroom upgrades, security upgrades, other improvements. Estimated cost assessment, 7.3 million. And then, as Gabe had mentioned, when we completed the facility master plan in 2017, um, there's been many factors that have contributed to, um, a very, very serious cost escalation on construction for, um, public works. Uh, and so we're estimating approximately 10% per year since then, if not more. Um, cost estimates are based, cost estimates in this presentation are based on the 2017 amounts. And so then that brings us to all-weather fields, and they have been a concern at almost every campus. Maintenance needed at some level, um, repair and replacement varies per campus, the amount needed, and all-weather turf is needed to ensure that student and community use, that students in the community have use throughout the year. And then I have another slide that we have, um, a member of our audience that I saw there, Shane Huff. If you'd like to come up, Shane, and maybe speak to our next slide here, just a little bit, if you would do that. He's probably thinking it'd be good if I'd seen it first, but... This is just, we're talking about the all-weather field, that we had our community, or our committee, um, for exploration, and then the impact that, that an all-weather field would have on the stu- the students and the athletes.
So, first off, I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen and, and allowing me to be a part of the committee. Uh, I teach physical education at the high school, and I coach at the high school, and I coach throughout the community. I work with kids as young as three, uh, up to adults. And so I try to get involved and make a big difference in our community. Uh, I think impacting kids' lives is, is the way to go to, for change, hence being a teacher. So, from a physical education perspective, uh, one of the big issues we have is, um, approximately, I'd say, 1,000 kids a day utilizing, um, our facilities. And when it rains, or even if it rains the first rain of the year, we're not allowed to use the north fields. Uh, they just get waterlogged, the drainage is really bad. And so then we, with the amount of students that we have, um, in some, some periods, up to six classes going at once, with, you know, anywhere from 35 to 45, uh, per class, uh, we don't really have room and places to go. So, um, from a physical education perspective, having a facility with all-weather field would allow us to still utilize, uh, the outdoors, and get on a all-weather field, and get kids moving, get kids engaged, and hopefully create lifelong active people. I mean, that's, that's the goal of our physical education program. From a student, uh, athlete perspective, um, I'm a big believer that, uh, athletics is an extension to the educational process. I'm a big believer that it's part of the classroom, if used correctly. We can really use it as a means to teach many life lessons, um, as well as hopefully to reach kids that might be there out. This might be their, their reason why they go to school every day, is to play a sport that they love, and they have to maintain that GPA. They have to, uh, be more disciplined in the classroom, be disciplined, and, um, show better citizenship in our community. Uh, those are things that good programs preach. And currently, what we have... And currently, what we have is facilities that don't match the needs for many of our athletes, especially the winter sports. And as we all know, soccer's now in the winter. Um, and we don't have facilities to, to meet the needs of the kids, uh, that, that love that sport and that want to potentially move on and be student athletes at the next level. Um, and one thing I tell all my kids is there's a place for every kid to play. And if it's, uh, something that you want to do and continue to pursue your education, um, we'll find you a home. And I'm a big believer in that, and, and we can do that. Currently, we use the high school stadium field, and it's approximately sixty-two yards wide. Um, and we, we can get the length probably about a hundred and twelve to a hundred and sixteen, I'd say. Um, the length isn't really the issue, it's the width. Um, but it, it, it gets, after the first couple rains and the amount of traffic we get in the fall with football, by the time we get to soccer and after the first wrenching, um, you're, you're, you're playing on, um, a very wet surface that's not very safe, not conducive to learning, not conducive to playing the game how it's supposed to be played. And, um, we're not just providing the best environment for our kids. And as I shared with the committee, the, the NCAA, which should be our gold standard in regards to what our kids want to aspire to play, because that's being a student athlete at a four-year university, the minimum qualifications that an NCAA program will host an event is a seventy-yard wide field by a hundred and fourteen yards long. And so we're currently at sixty-two yards wide. Maybe we can push it to sixty-three, but I don't think so. Um, and so we're not meeting the needs of, of our, our young ladies and our young men, um, in regards to, uh, playing surfaces. Most of our training sessions during the season are on blacktop. So we can't even train on grass. Every other school south of us has turf fields, every other, every other, and lights. So they're able to train a solid two hours, and we're dealing with, uh, blacktop and no lights. So we maybe get fifty minutes of training in, um, at the peak when it's mid-December and it's, gets the darkest the earliest. And so we're not really giving our kids a, a fair, um, playing field and a fair opportunity to be their best that they can be in something that they love to do. Um, and I grew up in this community, and soccer, when I grew up, was not the most popular sport. But today it is. It is the most popular sport, and we have lots of kids playing. And, um, and the demographics of our kids in our school, that's the sport they love to play. And so I feel it's important that we recognize the need for both our physical education students, but also our student athletes and our entire community. Because I do, from a community standpoint, work with a youth club organization with three-year-olds up to, I have eighteen-year-olds. And, um, they, we just don't have facilities to meet their needs. There's not one regulation-sized, full-size field in, in the county of Mendocino. So we could be the first to do that. There's no turf fields in Mendocino County. So we could be the first to do that. Um, with the club that I run, we have programs coming in from the Bay Area, um, as far south as, uh, Modesto, that'll come into our community and play. And they stay the night, they spend money in our hotels, they spend money in our restaurants, they shop at Costco. I ran into a kid from Santa Rosa that played for Atletico. And I was like, hey, what are you guys shopping here for? They say every time we play in Ukiah, this is where we shop, because it's, we just stop by here and then we head back home. Those are tax dollars being spent in our community. Um, three weeks ago, we had twenty-five people spend money at Black Oak, ate lunch from, uh, U-12 Girls Team, from Petaluma. So I know the difference that we're making with our little club is pretty significant. Um, having facilities to, to complement what we're doing will only make what we're doing that much better for our children and give them that much more exposure and that much more opportunity to grow and learn through the game, but also bring more people within our community. Um, because that's just the youth. Uh, if I, if I'm able to have some facilities to work with, then, then I can start to grow a program into the men's and women's and coed and, and, because this sport can be played well into your adult life. Um, so I'm excited to be a part of this community, um, I'm excited, uh, this committee. I'm excited to, um, advocate for the Physical Education Department and our student athletes, because it would be a, a, hopefully, a soccer field, but obviously other sports could be able to use it and train on it, um, when is needed as well.
Thank you, Shane.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Okay, so our committee determined a high priority need to build an artificial turf field at Ukiah High. Sorry, I am button-challenged. Potential state funding match. So now we're getting into, we've seen all the needs of every school site that we have, and then the need too for our artificial turf field. And so here's where we talk about, um, our potential state funding match, which is approximately twenty million dollars. Um, some of it for the portables and some of it for our permanent structures. But then that would assume that we have a local match of approximately thirteen million. And that's also split out between portables and permanent. So, local resources needed. Um, you as the Ukiah Unified School District Board are considering placing a measure on the March third, twenty twenty ballot to fund school facility upgrades. A proposed measure would extend the current tax rate to no more than sixty dollars per a hundred thousand in assessed home value. And that's not market value, but just assessed home value. The measure then would generate up to eighty-eight million in locally controlled funding, which we desperately need with all of the facility needs, um, that we have for our, for our students. And the accountability measures, um, there are many. The funding would stay local to support, um, Ukiah Unified Schools and could never be taken away by the state. No funds could be used for administrator salaries or pensions. And we would have a citizens oversight committee and independent audits that would ensure all funds are spent as required. And that concludes this presentation.
Thank you. Pam?
I was gonna get into details about the width of the field, but that's probably not a good use of our time right now, so I will put my little pen down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do you think I could, oh, I'm sorry, Gabe. Um, item D two, South Valley School Site Improvements Review and Recommendations, including additional classroom and food service area.
All right, good evening again. So when I think, go ahead.
Nope.
I was just gonna say, when I was reviewing this slide a little bit earlier, I, I remembered something I read years ago, which is that the color, that mint-green color is used in psych wards a lot because it's soothing. And I feel like after this week, it was a really judicious use of that color for this presentation, so. Um, so this is a recap of what we've done. Um, as you all remember, we successfully, um, installed a new admin building. Um, the, the building itself was a forty-by-thirty-two, it was a modular, so it's a permanent modular. It was put on a, uh, concrete foundation. We upgraded the fire alarm, and these were, this, the last, these last portions of it were required by, um, the Division of State Architect to do this. So we had to upgrade the fire alarm systems, we upgraded the electrical. Um, and we also did ADA, um, upgrades that included the bathroom, the student bathroom onsite, and also, uh, site work. So that's the concrete and asphalt. The, the, um, and, and then also did the repaving of the basketball court. So it was a significant amount of work. The total cost of that portion of it was one point eight million. If you remember, we also had a third alternate, which was for that CTE building, it's the stick-built CTE building, which the lowest bid of the three bids we received came in at two point six million, um, which was over project budget. So at the time, we had about three million all up, I believe, a little bit less than that. So we were unable to do that third element. The total remaining in that Fund Twenty-Six is about one point five million. So, with the, the shift to big picture, um, the school has, uh, it really doesn't have the, the extreme necessity for that, for a CTE building onsite specifically for food services. However, one of their biggest, the biggest remaining issues we have there is the fact that there is no cafeteria or indoor eating area there. That's something that we've all identified. Um, uh, and then one of the other issues we have with the site is that we have a old admin building, which is, um, to turn a recent phrase, is a vintage building. And, and, but it has zero worth on eBay, so let's not get our hopes up. So we need to get rid of it, um, and we need to get in some, some additional resources there. We do have that one point five million, that's, that's kind of the, the asset that we've identified we have to work with there. So ideas we have, um, the, given the current economic climate and given the current construction climate, I think it would be, uh, judicious to, to be, um, economical in our, in our aspirations. So the idea, you know, talking this through with, with, um, with Chris Sweet and with Don Alameda, we've come up, said I have some ideas that revolve around two nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot standard, um, mobiles or, or modulators. These could either be, depending, you know, once we dig into the details a little bit more and get some better cost, cost, uh, models, we could potentially do these as a concrete foundation, similar to the admin building. Or if we had to, if we felt we, um, we didn't have the budget for it, we could bring them to a stick-built. We haven't, um, dug into that, in that detail. And that's one of the, kind of the items that we're looking for is, is, um, instruction from the board to continue to pursue this within these bounds. So, uh, those two nine-sixties, one of them would be a food service-oriented building. So that would include, um, a facility to do the, do the minimal prep that's done there, um, something resembling a speed line, and then some, um, seating for students. Um, Don ran some numbers, and he, he felt that we could get about twenty-five to thirty student seating, um, for, for cafeteria in there. Um, and then the, the second building would be some additional, either instructional space or breakout space, uh, something that the, the site has identified they need extra space for. So we, we would, the idea would be to have a, kind of a standard classroom setup, um, and then, um, make it a little, uh, modular and that we, that we'd spec in some movable walls that allow us to, to basically turn one large space into a couple small spaces. Would, would you give us kind of a little bit more bang for our buck? Any questions?
Not so much for you, but, so you wouldn't be able to fit that many kids, I think you, in there to eat, is that correct? Chris?
So, so there, I, I believe your total student population is around a hundred, right?
On here, yes.
I don't see a scenario where, and, and even with that, the original CTE bu-, um, building, I don't see a scenario where we can fit that many students in the space we have on campus, let alone with the buildings we could build.
So, does that feel okay, though, to have a space that's gonna be smaller?
What, one of, and Zoe, one of the items that would be, remember when we do projects, particularly in this day and age, when, when the, the market is so uncertain, um, one of the, the models that I really lean towards is building in a, getting a base model, which is what, what is the bare minimum, bare minimum that we need and that we know we can do. And then we, we make a modular, um, hard-bid design in that we have some add alternates on there that we can continue to expand out. So one of the, one of the add alternates we do would be a, uh, outdoor, um, eating area that is a hard lid, so it would be safe from rain, but it would be exposed to the elements. And then when we combine that with, um, potentially combine that with the, the food service, um, cart would give us a little bit, a little bit more leeway out there as well. Um, and again, I, this is not, this is not my ideal, but it's, it's hard, it's, it's hard to really get a clear identification of what our costs are gonna be at this point. I mean, to, to really, and it used to be you could punch in a rough square footage and we, and you'd get within shooting range. The last project we ran, which was this admin building, came into over a thousand dollars per square foot. Um, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to s-
For a portable?
For a modular, yes. Now granted, there were, there were some site improvements that added to that cost, but that's actually extracting out the basketball court. So there was the fire alarm and the electrical upgrades, which will be able to be piggybacked off for this new, this new, these new modulators. I mean, that work was already done, and it also included the renovation of the bathroom. However, those were, um, those are not minor additions, but those, those were small, those were a, a smaller part of that project. So I, I think estimating a, a, if I were to estimate just a straight-out with no site work, just how much would it cost to do a, put in a classroom right now? I would say it would be in the nine hundred to a thousand, uh, dollars per square foot. One of the problems we have here is not just the additional cost, but the fact that it's hard to attract bidders. Um, the last few projects we've had, five years ago, I would expect four or five bidders. We have one. There's been times where we've had no bidders. Um, the Oak Manor portable classroom, we had no bidders. Uh, Steve, I believe, when Heelsburg recently did a, the gym, I think their first round, you didn't get any bidders, is that right? Or very minimal bidders, so.
So, so this is a, a two-thousand-foot structure?
It's a nine, two nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot structures.
So that's two thousand square feet? For one point five million dollars?
I hope it's less, but-
So that, I mean, I-
But we-
Seems a little crazy, like, a house-
Absolutely.
Would be a lot less than that.
You could build many houses. I mean, you, you could, you could build much more than this in a residential market without paying prevailing wage and without having to go to DSA, yes.
But if this were stick-built, it would be way more than-
You know, and that's something that I really, I, I have been diving into a little bit. There's, there's less and less justification to go to a modular. What modular gets us is a more, more defined, uh, i- it takes out some of the guesswork, and it also allows for a more S, a more, um, aggressive construction schedule. So when you go to a modular building, it's pre-engineered, so the process through DSA is rela-, is relatively less timely than if you were doing a, something that was built from the ground up. Again, there's less and less reasons to do it these days, so that the, the difference in price between a modular and a stick-built is starting to, to shrink quite a bit. And the benefits of a stick-built building outweigh it. I'll be, you know, very bluntly, if this was one of our own sites, um, I, I may be, I would may advocate for a different solution. But at this site, because it's a leased site, um, and because of the timeline we, we really look at, I mean, right now, the kids don't have anything to eat in, and we have a building that's completely useless and, and is, um, and is basically mothballed. So I think that it lends itself to this model. I, I would be concerned about trying to be too aggressive in what we're trying to do in our scope, because I would not want to get to another scenario in which we have gone so big that we, um, that we can't do a project within the budget that we have identified. If we have more of a budget, often, you know, if we have more, more budgetary numbers to work with, obviously that solves some of those issues, but we also have that time factor. So if we're trying to get something done, um, in the summer, we're already way behind the curve. And frankly, I, I might, you know, one of the models I would look at would actually be doing some work that is outside of the summer, because we would, it's more attractive to bidders, and we could probably get a little bit better price on it. So we might, you know, look at a scenario in which we, we demo the building during the summer, we put in, um, probably the, the hard shade structure and bring in the food cart to serve the students, and then have construction go while school's in session. Um, and again, we may get to that anyway, just because of the timelines with, um, the, the, um, the state geologist, which needs, you know, we need to have soil samples done prior to going to DSA. We need to go out to bid and identify the modular, then we have to have the plans built up, then it has to get submitted to DSA and accepted, um, so.
Megan, did you have a follow-up?
I, I was ready to make a motion, but I just sort of got shocked by the cost, realizing it was a two-thousand-square-foot structure.
Right.
So now I'm like, thinking a little bit, but I feel a little trapped, so I think I'm gonna make the motion anyway.
Well, I, so keep in mind, I-
I'm trapped by you.
No, I, I understand. Um, I just want to just reiterate that the, the numbers that I have, that nine hundred or more hundred square foot, first of all, that's shared by many people in my, you know, my peers and, and my, you know, the listeners and all. I mean, that's, that seems to be a no, that's a number we're all talking about and that we've seen, and we're, we're seeing it in Sonoma. I don't know if the trend continues. Things usually don't go down in price, particularly in construction, but we're in uncharted waters. I mean, I've never seen multi-years of any, of ten percent. I mean, the standard used to be three and five percent before, before the fires. But we also have issues, you know, that, that part, that, there's parts that may have leveled off, but there's other parts that are continuing to escalate. So materials costs have, have gone up. Roofing materials have gone up about thirty percent in the last, the last year. Um, a lot of that has to do with, um, with tariffs, and a lot of it has to do with supply and demand. A lot of that has to do with tariffs, and a lot of it has to do with supply and demand. So the more, the more disasters that are out there, the more floods, I mean, all these, all these building materials are shared throughout our entire region. So one of the, the big catalysts for that first bump in construction costs was not actually in California, it wasn't the fires, it was the floods in Texas. And that kind of, that's a trend that we haven't seen go down. So.
Gabe, does that, one and a half million dollars include the shade structure?
So that 1.5 is our budget. That's what we have in that community development fund.
The plan that I see, the diagram, I am not identifying the shade structure, so I'm wondering, is that part of the two buildings plus the shade structure in that budget?
So, so again, that, that number, I don't have a hard budgetary number. I haven't done a construction cost estimate on this. Part, I mean, I haven't had the bandwidth to do a very, a really good one. I would like to, but one of the, the next item that we're actually bringing to you would be the request to proceed with a contract with Dawn Alameda for the architectural, and that's what would, that's what would get, would get us to the construction cost estimate and allow us to hone it. We're, we're not asking for any commitment other than to continue to pursue this and that item, which would be for the architectural fees. Any plans would, would come to the board before we went out, obviously.
So I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
So I'm going to move approval of the South Valley site improvements to include an additional classroom and food service area, including the shade structure, to be completed within the identified budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Although I'd love to see a stick built, I realize time is-
I think the motion is silent, I'm whether it's a stick built or not, so I think for me, if the architect or you comes back with a stick built plan, I-
Absolutely. And again, I, it's something that when I have a little bit more bandwidth, I am going to be digging down a little bit more with, but I, I think it's still, it's the cost and the, and the timeline, and I think-
Well, if the timeline's like another couple of months and it could be stick built, I think that that's worth pursuing. But it sounds like we're going to be contracting with Dawn Alameda anyway and we'll have more information.
Well, when I bring, when we bring this back, I'll make sure to have some information on a, on a stick built option, probably, you know, basically some budgetary numbers, and I'll try to get a little bit better, give you an idea of what the time, that time difference would be. So.
And then what would be the agreement? What would be the agreement with the city? Do we need any permission from them?
We would. We have gone the green light to remove the building, but looks like Deb's about to-
Yeah, it's specified in our MOU what we need to do. So we've talked about this at the last time we did it, and we just need to give them notification, and they've been open to us doing such things.
Didn't we redo our agreement with them not very long ago?
We did. We have a good current agreement, so.
Any other discussion? The motion on the table is, just to reiterate, I'd love you to say it again.
I'm going to move that we approve the South Valley site improvements to include an additional classroom, food service area, and a shade structure, or whatever, covered food area, to be completed with the identified budget.
Do you want me to second it again?
Nope, I just wanted everybody to know what we were voting on. But thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? All right, thank you, Gabe.
Thank you. And I believe the next item is the architectural. So if there's any questions at this point, I might as well stay up here.
So this next item just goes with the item we just discussed. It's approval of architectural services with Dawn Alameda to begin work on designing the project.
And that didn't have to go out to bid because it was under 100,000?
Just barely.
Well, the, so architectural fees would, so this, architectural fees or design services are not, they're not construction costs, so it's not, they don't fall under DIR or those regs. We did go out, we did do an RFP for the original, if you remember, we did an RFP for architectural services for the original South Valley, and we're just, we're, you know, we can roll for five years on that. We could, if you would like us to, obviously, we could go out to bid or issue another request for proposals or request for qualifications for architectural services and, and, you know, get more, get more architects on our list. That's certainly an option.
Gabe, and just because we have a new board member, can, can you work on defining the acronyms?
Acronyms, absolutely. So RFP is a request for proposals, and RFQ is a request for qualifications. So when you're looking at professional services, in this case, in this instance, it's design, so architects, electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, you don't, we don't have the same restrictions that we do as, if we're, if it's public work, so that's actually doing the work of building it. This is professional services, this is design. It's still best practices to, to try to get a big pool with multiple candidates, and we have certain, we have very divine parameters of what we're looking for. So in this case, we did a request for proposal for architectural services, I believe, two years ago. We received several responses, and we reviewed all of the responses and did it, and through a scoring metric, matrix, awarded the original contract for architectural services to Dawn Alameda.
Megan?
Do you have a follow-up question, Anne?
No.
I was going to move approval of the agreement for architectural services with Alameda Architecture for the South Valley Modular Lunchroom and Classrooms Building Project.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. I would like to take a break. That's okay.
Oh, is it that button back there? Hello? That's it. Hello? Okay. There's a button back here. So in 2017, the superintendent requested a 7-11 committee be convened. The committee consisting of a variety of community stakeholders met several times, and a report from the committee to the Board of Education was provided in December 2017. The report recommended that both the Hopland and Redwood Valley Elementary School site properties be deemed surplus. The board passed that resolution.
Can I clarify, was that in 2007, not 2017? The 7-11 committee?
No, it's, it's just been a couple of years.
That the schools were closed?
No, that the, we convened the 7-11 committee to deem them surplus.
Okay.
There were two 7-11 committees.
Yeah. It was right at the end of Pat Wilson's, when he retired, and Sage was on the, and Guy Mills, and we're on our committee, because we had to, we had to do that to recommend that they be deemed surplus.
Yeah. And the first 7-11 committee was in 2010, I believe, 2010.
And that's when they were closed.
Yep.
Okay. So clarification confirmed. And since then, the district's been working toward a favorable solution for both surplus properties. At this time, GMB Realty Partners has expressed interest in the Hopland property. So the temporary access agreement allows GMB Partners right of entry to our Hopland property for the purpose of conducting a feasibility evaluation, which may include physical plant inspection of all structures and systems, and soils and environmental analysis. And administration recommends that the board approve this temporary access agreement.
Megan?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
I have great news. Pugini's calling, so maybe some power's coming on in my neck of the woods. Sorry for interrupting you.
That's okay.
Are there any other questions or comments for Penny? I'd love a motion.
I, I move approval of the temporary access agreement with GMB Realty Partners.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
I am abstaining in an abundance of caution. The conflict that could or could not exist is that my daughter works at a business owned in part by GMB Realty.
All right, thank you, Anne. And Penny, thank you too.
You're welcome.
You know what? We, did we not vote?
No, we voted.
Oh, we did. There was an abstention.
Something is wrong with me. Because I'm abstaining.
We're almost there. You're doing good. All right, item D5. District initial proposal for the 2019-20 negotiations with the UTA. Nicole, thank you.
Yes, we have section, section seven of the bargaining agreement, hours of employment. The district has an interest in clarifying language regarding professional learning communities. The district has an interest in redefining the flexible professional development day. The district has an interest in ensuring the work calendar can include contingency days for unanticipated school closures. Also, section 8.1, the general salary schedule provisions, the district would like to review salary schedules for unit members whose credential or license may inhibit progress on the salary schedule. And then lastly, section 11, the unit member evaluation procedure, the district would like to update the evaluation procedures.
Thank you. And item D6, presentation of the initial proposal for 2019-
Do we need to make a motion?
Oh, do we approve this?
Yes.
Learn something there every day?
I'll second.
Well, I was going to make a motion, should I make it?
Oh, I thought you said I make the motion, I'm sorry.
I'm going to recommend, I'm going to move that we approve the district's initial proposal for the 19-20 negotiations with the UCAI Teachers Association.
I will second that as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you for tolerating my strange leadership. All right. Oh my goodness. Item D6, presentation of the initial proposal for the 2019-20 negotiations by the UCAI Teachers Association.
Yes, UCAI Teachers Association has let us know that they would like to sunshine section six, the class size and elementary overage compensation, and academic and athletic stipends.
All right, and I'm assuming we don't have to propose.
Yes.
You have to move acceptance of the initial proposal.
I move that we accept the UTA initial proposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? All right, thank you guys. All right, we are on item E1, three-year strategic plan process update.
Just a quick update tonight, I will get you a written timeline by Monday in the TGIF, but I just wanted to let you know that we are on track for updating our three-year plan. Steve's Wyback will be facilitating the initial process with stakeholders into the revision of our plan, and then we will be doing focus groups thereafter, and the board will be involved along the way with that. But I will get you a written timeline. As part of that, we still are doing some visits. We actually went to, we visited a high school in San Diego on Tuesday, which was two days ago. Quick little trip there. We actually told Chris Sweet that he should go visit that high school. It is Health Sciences Middle College. So it's a middle college program, and it also places kids in internships three days a week, so. And granted, San Diego has a lot more capacity for internships than we do, theirs are all Health Sciences focused, but-
Is this an in-district charter?
It is a charter school, yes.
But in-district, not separate?
It is an independent charter school.
It's an independent charter?
And Cali, the Cali project that we have going on, they arranged for this visit, and Doug Fisher, who's an amazing educational researcher and author, he works for San Diego State. He did some professional development for us probably about seven years ago. Did some work with our leadership network, and he is the, the chief, one of the principals, I can't remember his exact title, but he and his partner Nancy Frye, his partner from San Diego State, run this school. And probably a hu, they have many positives. One of the big takeaways for me was the culture they've created on that campus. They are heavy into restorative practices, and I'm, I've actually requested a video of how they greet students in the morning, because it has a lot of really positive, great implications, and a pretty easy to implement strategy. So we also plan to visit Roseland School District in the Santa Rosa area. And then there's a, an elementary district, a K8 district in Southern California, that came up through the, the state did a study, I think I shared it with the board, on positive outliers. And so we were able to more easily find some districts to visit that way. So we are in the process of that too, just on a learning mission. As part of our strategic planning process, Steve's Wyback has recommended that we bring in some external partners to help us think about our, think outside of the box about our process. And so we are bringing in several external, external providers into our process on the first day, so they can kind of help us think in terms of best practices and strategies that are being implemented throughout the state, beyond Mendocino County. So I'm excited to think about that too. And I'll share with you in the timeline who those people are so far. Tried to get somebody from Long Beach, but they're a little busy and didn't want to come up for our one day. However, there's a former principal from Long Beach who's the superintendent in Marin County. We actually visited the school that he was principal of, Alvarado Elementary School in Long Beach, so he will be one of the external, and he's heavily involved in curriculum and program work throughout the state, so.
He's not in Marin because they fired him in Long Beach.
He's not, no. And I was actually coaching him as a new superintendent, on the superintendent side of the house. So, anyway, he's just one of the several who will be part of our process. So we're very excited about that. I'll get a timeline out, let you know what opportunities there are for you all to participate in the process as well. So that's an update there. I feel really fortunate that Steve's Wyback has agreed to facilitate our process, so it'll be very exciting. And that is all, have on that.
Thank you. And can we hear about E2, follow-up action strategies for the district learning visits? Prelimar-
Yes, got it.
PSATs.
Yes, so the, Katie will be talking about some detail around the PSATs. This was a strategy that we heard about in our visits last spring, and we're trying to keep these ideas that came forward from those visits fresh, so that's why we put it on the board agenda. But Katie has been, and our sites, have been busy prepping for the PSAT.
Good evening. We wanted to just give you a quick little update, how we're getting prepared for the PSAT that is next Wednesday. We'll be assessing about 1,200 students. It's the first time we've ever given the PSAT to all students. I should say 1,200 at the high school and a few other at UESA and South Valley. So we're gearing up. We've sent out a letter to parents, most parents have probably received that letter today, and that letter, if you're a high school parent, also has the schedule of the rooms that the students will be going to. The high school has been very busy planning, because they have the largest number of students, and so logistically, it's very complicated. Jessica Lee has been pivotal in planning, along with Eric Crawford. And during that day, they'll be doing career awareness and college-going activities for the seniors who are not taking the assessment in the morning. It'll be in the morning, and then we'll have, because it's a minimum day, we'll have a couple more hours in the afternoon, and we have, Eric Crawford is organizing more activities for students around careers and college-going. There's a group of us from the District Service Center that'll be at the high school supporting, so that's exciting. We also had some interesting things, realizations as we've been planning, that, one, all students need calculators, and they can't use the calculators on their Chromebooks like we were hoping. So if you've seen, there are large amounts of calculators, and what we decided was to purchase the scientific calculator, not the graphing calculator. One, those are very expensive, but two, if you've not been trained on the graphing calculator, it's a challenge to use. So, and so that's been interesting, and I want to thank Veronica for working on that project. She's been doing, and Marcia. And then Jenny Bailey's been doing a lot of work prepping, she helped create the schedules. We had to get some of our schools to have a signed affidavit, and so we've been doing lots of work to get ready. So we are piloting. We've put out some talking points to our principals to help teachers understand also why we're giving the PSAT, and then it's a really strong piece to have students, all students have access to preparing for the SAT and preparing for college. And it also, the 10th and 11th grade are also the National Merit Scholarship Awards. So if you do well on that, you can be eligible for scholarships. So we're really excited. It's a- It's a big experiment, a large pilot here, but we're hoping, we know it'll be bumpy, but we're hoping to learn a lot from that and for our students to have a lot of access. So that's what we're doing with the PSAT.
Thank you. I, I've been surprised at the feedback I've gotten about this out in the community, in a couple different ways, but I, can you remind me what the plan is with the results?
So the results are, we've sent home in the letter that the students have a link that will set up an account, and they'll get their scores back. And then that links them to the Khan Academy. So that will link them to lessons, it will show them areas that they need to work on, and it will link them to lessons that they can practice. It also links them to the, PSAT has, the SAT and the PSAT have practice assessments that you can use, so that links them to that, and they can look at where they need to work on. So that's how the students will use the assessment data. And then we will be compiling that data as a district to look at where are we with college readiness, because it's another indicator for college readiness. At the high school level, the data will be used, one of the major points of the data is to look at, are we missing any students that really should be on the A through G track that maybe aren't? Or students that get inspired to be on the A through G track because they, you know, have now had access to the PSAT? So that's really the, the point, and that is for the student to understand what the areas that they need to work on and gives them some access. And so also, are we missing any students that really should be on the A through G track? And then are we inspiring any students that realize, oh, I can do this, I want to, I want to be A through G? So that's kind of our, our major purpose of how we'll use the data. We don't, we haven't, we've looked at some of the reports that we'll get back, so that's going to be another learning process, is what will the reporting back to the school and the, actually more of the district level. The high school's been getting the PSAT results, but...
So, you know, I'm remembering back in my PSAT days, which is a long time ago now. So it's the same test for eighth through 11th graders. They're not, there's not an eighth grade version and an 11th, is that correct?
There is, so the eighth and ninth graders take a different test.
Okay.
And then the 10th and 11th take the same PSAT assessment.
Okay, so it's like a pre-PSAT for the eighth and 11th graders?
Yeah, a pre- pre.
And I guess my, my one thought is, based on some of the feedback I've heard in the community, is there also a plan for those who, how to communicate to those who don't do well on the test and find that discouraging when maybe they don't need to be discouraged?
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping that the, we haven't talked explicitly about how we're going to counsel students that don't do well, but really what we're hoping is the whole idea of a mindset that, okay, you didn't do well on it now, that doesn't mean you can't do well on it later. And if they don't start early, they don't have a chance to improve. So that's where the link to the Khan Academy and really understanding what are some areas I might need to work on. So it's really more of a growth.
I'm really hoping that we get the messaging right on this.
Yeah.
I'm concerned, I mean, I'm, again, it brought up these questions that I hadn't thought about, because I was like, oh, great, give everyone the PSAT, but there was this feedback that's been puzzling to me. So I'm really hoping that our explanation to the students about why they're doing this and what the results may or may not mean is really happening very clearly and purposely from somebody. Because what I've been reassuring, you know, I don't even know what, you know, I'm supposed to say, but what I've been saying to people who've been expressing concern is that it's also just practice taking a test. And that, especially for the younger kids, the results are not as, as critical as getting used to the idea of taking the test. And I'm just not sure that message is as, and this is our first year doing it, I just want to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences that are not what we want.
Katie, can we also get the talking points out to the board that we sent to the staff?
Yes.
So we'll be happy to share those.
Katie, I ran into Jessica Lee, we were watching the parades during homecoming, and I, she helped me realize something. A lot of times when we talk about stuff, we weren't sure if it was a good idea, and we were like, yeah, it's a good idea, it's going to cost some money, but we think it's a good idea, go for it. And I didn't really appreciate how much work went into putting together this program. So all the folks that have been involved, it just, in talking to her, I was like, oh, man, this is, this is a whole bunch of time, so thank you guys a lot.
Thank you. And the middle schools will be taking the assessment in December. So all nine through 11, and then the middle schools in December. And I will definitely pass that on to everybody.
Carolyn, do you have a question?
Not a question, I just wanted to say thank you for following up and doing this. This was something we talked about last year when we visited Long Beach and, what was the other place we visited?
San Bernardino.
San Bernardino. And I just really appreciate, you know, you guys going ahead with this and the work that you've put in and, and keeping us informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Item E three, I'd like to open a public hearing. Public hearing resolution number eight, 2019-20, regarding the sufficien, suffici, sufficiency? I need a little bit more speech therapy. Sufficiency and insufficiency of the instructional materials.
Every year, we come to the board to present to you that we are sufficient in textbooks. That's part of the Williams Act that was passed. I don't have the actual passage date of that. But every year, we have to show that we have sufficient textbooks for all students in ELA math, science, and social studies. We had our Williams visits from MCOE, and we passed all those visits, and we are here today to let you know that we are sufficient.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Do we take a motion?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
Am I hogging all the motions?
No, it's good. You keep going.
You're doing so good.
All right, I'm going to keep, keep it up. I'm going to move that we approve resolution number eight, 2019-20, regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials, because they are sufficient.
Is there a wonderful seconds?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right. Deb, what do you have for us?
Just a few things. One is, I am so sorry to all the people who are affected by the power shut off. I know we have a couple of board members who are affected. We have many students in the surrounding areas, but I'm super grateful that we have power and that we didn't have to close our schools, so. And I appreciate the community in supporting us as we try and quickly get communication out, and it's a whole new, whole new world with power shut offs. So, anyway, I'm sorry that people are dealing with that, and we are trying very hard to support staff and students. I just sent an email out to our teachers because we know that some kids do not have power at home, internet. In Redwood Valley, some people's cell phones are still not working, and so we've, I've asked them to grant some mercy on our students who are unable to get their homework done. And then we're also offering up our facilities to our staff when students are not present to be able to use some water and electricity. So, anyway, we're just trying to roll through that. New territory. I'm super glad I'm not in Lake County right now, that's all I can say. Well, they've just been, all of Lake County has had their power off. And I was talking to an employee at MCOE who lives in Lake County, I guess they have one gas station up in Lake County, that's all. So it sounds pretty brutal, so, super thankful. Let's see, we had our elementary data collaborative or cycle of inquiry yesterday. We will get that, those presentations out to you so you can see their data. We've changed our focus a bit this year. The principals gave us some feedback last year that they wanted to dive a little bit deeper into one problem and identify what their problem of practice is, so they can, as we, as they brainstorm with all the colleagues in the room, it's really focused. So that went really well yesterday with the elementary principals and the teacher leaders who were there. And we actually did all the elementary schools together. So we'll share those, share that, their presentations with you in a TGIF.
Can you just give one problem that they were delving into, just one out of the six?
Katie, do you want, I'm trying to think of one of them. NACOMAS wanted some feedback on their, on their PLC action plan. Just, that's just an example.
Yeah, just as an example.
So that's just one example. So you'll see them all in their presentations, too.
Thank you.
But that's just one example. Okay, sorry, Katie, I wanted you to just get up again. Homecoming, a lot of you attended the homecoming festivities, and I'm always amazed by how much our students work. And those of you who are new parents to Ukiah High School, you got to experience that. And, you know, I think a lot about all the kids, all the skills that kids gain through the homecoming activities that maybe they don't learn in the classroom or life. So, anyway, it's, it's really fun, and I have to say, watching the marching band at halftime, I think there, I think I counted about 50 students on the field. It was so heartwarming to see that many kids involved in music and, and marching in formation. So I really appreciate our staff involved in our, in our music program. Let's see, what else? Penny, this is Penny's last board meeting with us, and I, I, I know I speak on behalf of the board that you have been an amazing CBO and built up so much trust with our staff. So we wish you the best, and I'm still upset with you, but I'm really happy for your life. So you'll get to go and, and be at home, which is great. So we've just appreciated all the years that you've committed to our district, and, and thank you. I just wanted to say thank you.
My heart may always be in Ukiah.
I think that is it. We have our next Principals Network meeting next week. It's actually at Sonoma County Office of Education because of the Pumpkin Festival in Ukiah next week. So the, the conference center is being used, so we're shifting to Sonoma County Office of Ed. And so that's been an exciting process, and you'll read my next column, but it's about slowing down a little bit and, and trying to help people avoid burnout. So both students and staff. So I just, I really appreciate all the work that our staff does to keep things rolling and everything that our students do and all of the work that our families do. So I think that is all I have.
Thank you. Are there any board reports? Bee?
It's not really a report. It's just, I wanted to sort of share with the board, because a lot of times we're wondering how we can bring families and the kids and everybody into different committees and just to our schools, that going out and seeing all our open houses and how families come in, the kids play outside, the parents are going in, seeing how many families attend all the different schools, and what, all the different schools have different things to offer, and parents and kids have really enjoyed that event. They really look forward to it. And when you were talking about homecoming and, you know, when you stand out there looking at the parade all the way along, families and communities are involved, so they do come to things that we have to offer, but they make those kinds of choices. Sometimes we would like different choices, but these choices are really important to them, and they, our staff and community does a really nice time together, has a really nice time together. That's all.
Thank you, Bee. Megan?
I, the trustee, Arkens, thank you.
It's, I'm affecting you even further down.
Anyway, her comments just prompted me to think of this. I, I, you know, I try to keep my board hat and my parent hat separate, but I did attend the back-to-school night at Ukiah High as a parent, and I was super impressed. So I wanted to pass that on to Gordon and the teachers that were there. It was, it was a lovely evening where I learned a lot about my kids' classes and the way the school worked, and it was, I was just really, really impressed. So as a board member, I was impressed, although I was there as a parent.
I will pass that on.
Ann?
I attended the city schools meeting with Superintendent Kewin, and I unfortunately did not bring my notes. So I remember we talked about the fact that the, the purple pipe, which is recycled water, is going to be available, and the city was suggesting that we plan on putting it in at Oak Manor because the fields, there's so many fields there, and so they think that we'll have a nice savings. Of course, no one had consulted with our facilities to see how much is that going to cost to actually hook up. We don't really know that. But they were excited to share the news that it was active and ready to go, or almost ready to go. They also talked about the fact that the, the new dog is being trained with the new person.
SRO.
With the new, SRO, the new school resource officer, and they were, so they were out. So the other officer had been covering everything for a few weeks. We also talked about concerned about Grove, they're on the west side of Ukiah near Pomalita. There's a couple different areas that are really hard to cross, and if we're encouraging kids to, to walk to school, it's really hard to cross Grove either at Spring or at Hazel, let alone at Dora. So even if you skip Dora, because it's really impossible, and you went up to either Grove or, you went up to either Spring or Hazel, it's still pretty difficult. So they said they would be looking at that as they do each street. So they're on Walnut right now, so I don't know if Grove is next or not. They were going to look it up and see when it was scheduled for, because they probably need either some bulb bouts or some flashing lights or something, because expecting kids to be able to cross that when it's so wide is a little silly. So, I don't know.
I think that's good.
Those are, those are the things I remember.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, thanks for going with that.
Thank you, Ann. Penny, your smile and your honesty, I will miss.
Thank you.
God, you have so many successes for us with that smile, just, those negotiations where you're like, okay, I know this is hard, I just, anyways, I will miss you. Okay, so those are my normal tears, I think we'll just move on. To item G one, which is also really exciting.
Do you want me to talk about that?
Yes, and I'd love you to talk about it.
Okay, so we are very thrilled that we have offered a contract to a very experienced chief business official, Steve Berickman, who's actually out here in the audience. Steve is currently working in Healdsburg Unified and has been for 13 years, but is living in Ukiah. So we feel very lucky that, that Steve is coming to us, and so I wanted to introduce Steve to you and, and welcome him soon to our school district. We've developed a transition plan because he's currently in Healdsburg, so he'll be, we will be working with, contracting with Healdsburg for some of his time. Super important to him that he helps us with our first interim and also helps Healdsburg, Healdsburg with their first interim. So I think we've got a good plan in place, and Steve, I want to welcome you to the district. So on the agenda tonight is the contract of the chief business official, and it is modeled very much after our previous, not our previous, our current CBO. This contract begins on, on December 31st, and so we're recommending approval of the contract for Steve Berickman as our CBO.
I move approval.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Awesome, welcome to the team.
Welcome, Steve.
Although, might I say, it might have been smarter to have moved it up in the agenda so that then we could have gotten his signature before he actually observed the meeting.
Oh.
Yes, just saying, just saying.
He hasn't run out yet.
Right, exactly.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the consent calendar agenda as presented. No, there's some controversy over here.
Is there a second?
No, no controversy.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? All right. Item I, planning.
We have, we have one thing. Oh, this is unusual, but we noticed a typo on the temporary access agreement on the term. It's, in the document attached, it says no later than July 10th, 2019. It should say 2020. So I'd just like to get that approval to correct that, if I may, and then we'll have a good agreement.
And then we'll have a good agreement.
All right, so. It's a first for me to make the motion.
You should probably want to retract your.
Zoe, can you modify your motion?
Yes, I would, I would like to modify my motion to change two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
For the term, correct. And I will second that amendment. Thank you. And thank you, Gabe, for catching that.
And uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Thank you guys for good eyes on that one. Okay, we did the consent agenda and back to planning.
So for the planning, agenda planning, we have a three-day, three, two and a half day strategic planning workshop that, that week. So it looks like the agenda planning will need to take place in the afternoon instead of at noon. That might seem.
What's the date then?
That meeting, Wednesday, November sixth?
Or we could do a five o'clock, if that works better.
Yeah, either four o'clock, five o'clock or something like that.
I did it recently. Who's doing it? Megan's doing it.
I'm going to an event that evening.
You are?
We could do it in the afternoon.
So perhaps sometime between six and five.
I can do it whenever, four, three, guys. I could do it at earlier.
Can you do it at one?
I could do it at one. At one? Yeah.
Heather, does that work for you?
One is so far good for me.
Okay.
All right. Uh, are there any burning issues that need to be added to the agenda? Thank goodness, um, let's adjourn this thing. Thank you, guys. There wasn't any eight o'clock.